Hello, April, let's go April 4th of 2020. If you're a diehard Jayhawk fan, go Hawks for tonight. We'll be here as long as we need to, but remember that. Remember that, Mike, remember that. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We do have a quorum present for our meeting tonight, so thank you for our commissioner for coming. Approval of minutes for March 7th, 2022. I've seen those. Does any commissioner have any changes or questions on the minutes? Okay, we're good for those as written on that one. We only have one agenda item tonight.
We need to vote for the minutes.
We need to vote on that for minutes approval. I'll take a, I'll take a vote for.
Have the minutes approved?
Thank you. Second it.
I wasn't here, but I'll say.
Oh, that's right. You weren't. You weren't either. I second it.
Yeah, we checked with the city attorney.
That's right. I would, you too. I'll second about this.
Okay.
On favor. Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Everyone seconded.
Thank you. New one business item tonight, 2022-05, Residence 604 Potawatomi. Hope you've looked at that. I went by, looked at that. On that request, conduct a public hearing for case number 2022-05, Residence 604 Potawatomi. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the property located in 604 Potawatomi from NBD Neighborhood Business District to L2, the L1 Light Industrial District. Staff report, please.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you said, this is a rezoning request for 604 Potawatomi from NBD Neighborhood Business District to I1 Light Industrial District. The property is currently occupied by June's Northland. Property is under contract to be purchased by Stripes Global, which is a service-disabled veteran-owned company that services medical needs of U.S. veterans. And this would allow for the reuse of the building as a distribution and fulfillment center for Stripes Global. This property is located in a hub zone, which is a classification given by the U.S. Small Business Administration and helps small businesses in urban and rural communities gain preferential access to federal procurement opportunities. That designation does require employment to be at least 30% of residents who live within that hub zone. So they would be employing a good number of folks who live within the immediate vicinity of this property. So there are a number of conditions of determination that we have to go over for any rezoning requests. So I'll just go through each of those for you. The first is the character of the neighborhood. So the property is 1.12 acres in size and is at the northeast corner of 7th and Potawatomi Streets along that 7th Street corridor, which leads straight into the front gate at the port. There are a number of commercial uses in close proximity and the rest is primarily single-family dwellings surrounding once you get back off of 7th Street. The zoning and the second criteria is the zoning and use of properties nearby. And I'm just going to turn on the zoning lamp here. It's a little bit easier. Let's see. So just briefly, the properties to the west are zoned Office Business District. Property to the north and west across 7th Street is occupied by Kids Connection. Property to the north along 7th Street is also zoned NBD and is occupied by a barber shop and tattoo and piercing studio. Other properties to the north are zoned R16 High Density Single Family. Properties to the east are also zoned R16. Property to the south is zoned R16 and is occupied by a Baptist church. And then further north along 7th Street, properties are zoned Office Business District and have a variety of retail office and residential uses. The next criteria is the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted. Again, the property is occupied by a large, single-story commercial building, which is suitable for a variety of potential uses. The next criteria is the extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property. The proposed rezoning should have little detrimental effect upon surrounding properties. The range of uses that's allowed in I1, the Light Industrial District, are fairly low intensity in nature. Most of them are actually allowed in other commercial business zoning districts in the city. The next is the length of time that the property has remained vacant as zoned. The property is not currently vacant. Again, it is occupied by June's Northland. It's our understanding that the owners of that business are looking to retire and move on from their business. The next criteria is the relative gain to economic development, public health, safety, and welfare by the reduction of the value of the landowner's property as compared to the hardship imposed by such reduction upon the individual landowner. Again, the proposed rezoning will have a positive effect on the economic development of the city and region by allowing for the adaptive reuse of an existing building for which the current owners do plan to retire in the near future. And the rezoning will allow the establishment of a veteran-owned and veteran-centered business while providing job opportunities for residents in the immediate area. The next criteria is the recommendation of permanent or professional staff. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. The next is the conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive land use plan. The area is identified as appropriate for commercial on the future land use plan, but due to the low intensity nature of uses that are permitted within the I1 zoning district, again, many of those are permitted in commercial zoning districts within the city. Staff does find that the proposed use is in conformance with the overall goals of the adopted comprehensive plan. And then the final factor, just any other factors that may be relevant to a particular amendment. And there are no other factors to note. After the required public notices were sent to property owners within 200 feet as required by Kansas statute, staff received one call from a notified property owner that was in favor of the rezoning request. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. The applicant is here as well, along with the current property owner.
Good, thank you. Since we have quite a few people here tonight, and thank you for coming for your tenants, and I appreciate that, we really do. Is that just for the people who are here, if you will just make us aware that with, if we approve this change to the Light Industrial District, what does that mean? So that people know the scope of Light Industrial Business, so they'll know that. What does that mean to them?
In terms of what would be allowed here? So if the planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning tonight, we'll then go to the city commission for final approval. And again, that rezoning to the Light Industrial District will allow for the specific use that's being proposed with that distribution center for Stripes Global to be, to move into this existing building.
What's the overall, do I need to push my button on? Probably.
No, no, no.
What's the overall use in an I1 district? What's the overall use in an I1 Low Industrial District? What does that, besides what these people are planning to do, what else is, can be in there?
There's a variety of uses. There's no one overall use. It allows for a variety of light warehousing, light manufacturing, those types of uses. For instance, the business and technology park is zoned I1. And, you know, the majority of the uses out there are, it's not heavy manufacturing where you're going to see smoke stacks and that type of things. It's very limited in the types of uses that can go in there.
So let me ask you another question. Are the new tenants, are the new owners going to do light manufacturing? Or is it mainly warehousing and it's a distribution center?
I will let the owner of the business speak to exactly what they're going to do.
Yeah, that's a good question because the issue is the scope of activities at that location. There not be a major conflict and not a major, what I call, major manufacturing, manufacturing, assembly, logistics, trucking, something that would be not maybe harmony within neighborhood, I think is the key word with that. We're probably looking for on that.
Yeah, and so when we do a rezoning, we're not rezoning for a specific business or a specific user. And so again, what you're talking about with, you know, the heavy manufacturing and the trucking and that type of thing, that would not be allowed in I1 regardless.
That's what I was trying to get to right there.
Well, we're trying, we'd like to have a, an explanation. I'd like to have an explanation of what they're going to use it for. Is it assembly? Is it, I think what they're trying to do is great.
Yep, so again, I'll let, once we get through the other comments, we'll let them address that.
If you don't mind, let's wait till we get to that where people can come up in an open forum. Let's open that up, open forum. And then we can discuss that in terms of, they can tell us exactly of the tenant, their plans on that. But our main thing is request for rezoning. We can approve, disapprove, or request more time if we decide to push that forward to the commissioners. Does any other commissioners have any question? Julie, before I open up, open forum with the people here tonight. Any other commissioners have any question on the intent of the rezoning request?
Yes, sir.
We're good? Okay, with that, at this time, then I would like to open up, open forum. And any person I'd like to, we appreciate you coming to the forum. And state your name, please, and your purpose for you. Thank you. Mike, you up? Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mike Riley, Riley Realty. Sit here on behalf of the seller, 604 Potawatomi, along with the buyer. Thank you for your time tonight. I think we're here tonight to talk about the life cycle of a building. You know, back in the day, this building was built and developed primarily as a grocery store. And I attended that grocery store, and Don, you might have, way back in the day when I was six, seven, eight years old. And when that use expired, the building went dark for a number of years in our community. And when it went dark, it was of no value to the neighborhood. It was of no value to our community. It was then purchased about 10 years ago, 11 years ago, by the current owner, who brought the building up to the jewel, quite frankly, that it is today for that neighborhood. It's the restaurant and event space that we all know as June's Northland. The clock is now setting, unfortunately, on that use. And it's a question of whether our community is going to take the opportunity to reinvest and to change the life cycle of this building. And we have an opportunity, as Julie mentioned, to bring in a service-disabled veteran-owned small business that focuses mainly on providing best-in-class medical, dental, and life science equipment to veterans, soldiers, and those in need. And tonight, I want to turn over the mic just for a few minutes to the CEO and founder of Stripes Global, Tyson Schultz, along with Keith Baird, the senior vice president, who will be on the ground and running this particular location for Stripes Global. Gentlemen.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Riley before he steps down, Commissioner?
And I do want to mention too, since Mike brought it up, since this building had started off as a grocery store, I know there's been a lot of talk about needing a grocery store in the north part of town. I know that there have been several grocery users who have looked at this building and determined that for the way today's grocery stores operate and set up, it just doesn't work. The site doesn't work. The parking doesn't work. So just to kind of put that, you know, notion at ease, this has been looked at for a potential grocery user and it's been determined by those grocery chains that this just wouldn't fit those needs.
We have marketed the property for over three years. But I think hearing from these two gentlemen about their intent and the history of their company, I think will hopefully shed some real light on what they're planning to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Hello, my name is Tyson Schultz. Thank you for having me today. I appreciate your time. I'm a service-disabled veteran, small business owner. I started this business five years and three months ago. We do about $5 to $7 million worth of revenue a year and growing. Our real intent here is, and the veterans might know this, is to, the intent of the Veterans Benefit Act of 2011 that Congress passed, it was then gone to the Supreme Court to be tested, wanted us to start businesses and in order to do this and employ each other, right? Because as you guys can both attest, the best person to employ a veteran is a veteran because we were different, right? So the intent was for us to manufacture, to build small business, be kind of inefficient and hire a lot of people, consume a lot of services. And that's my intent with Stripes. I've always wanted to take it from a distribution to light manufacturing and actually make something. And that's also important for the hub zone designation. We actually have to have a substantial transformational change in the project to tie the hub zone name to it, according to the U.S. government. So the light industrial in this space is super important. And light industrial, it sounds scary, but it's assembly, right? We're going to be taking boards, medical devices, making them in an ISO Class 7 room. You could kind of imagine, we're going to be in little white suits at mass and goggles. Well, you know what that looks like now. But we're going to be assembling these. These are high-paying jobs, a minimum of $22 an hour per the Kansas state regulation that we are getting incentives from them. We plan on creating 50 to 60 jobs. We are going to be working with the faith leaders in the area to hire people from the very localized area as well as the military bases and so on to hire veterans as well.
Being a Vietnam vet, I'm somewhat concerned and very proud of that, by the way. But I'm so open to, it has to work. It has to fit. It has to be a win-win for us. But you did say something that I was trying to get to with light industrial with the intent of more assembly instead of major manufacturing of dies, molds, and manufacturing of parts. That creates a lot of noise and would be, and some people would be upset with that. So I did hear your point of 50, 60 people, the hourly rate, and more an assembly operation in the medical, dental field for equipment. Is that correct? Did I say that?
Yes, and veterinary field. So some of it will be veterinary-focused. Veterinary medical device, they're actually regulated as much as our human devices. There's a corridor that goes from Kansas to St. Louis, and that's a very big deal.
With that assembling, with your anticipated 50, 60 people and five to seven million a year and what you're looking at, then what kind of logistics movement would that cause on a daily basis, a weekly basis? What would that look like in terms of movement?
I foresee, and I thought a lot about this. So our drugs are moved very rigidly through major carriers, right? Because they're controlled substances. Even though they're not narcotics, controlled 2 and 1 substances, they're still 3. So they have to have a chain of custody. That's going to be FedEx and UPS, maybe a little DHL. And that one truck comes in the morning usually in operations, drops off the product. Then in the afternoon, whoever you pick as your carrier will come in the evening. So if you imagine, you'll have a UPS, a FedEx in the morning, and then we'll have probably a UPS in the evening come pick up for our distribution. There will probably be one large truck once in a while for medical device when we're getting in components. But that will be probably once a week, we estimate, if not less.
I was just there yesterday for my brunch, so nice location. I think you answered my question, but the issue was with that parking lot, with the movement logistics and with movement area. I got it, UPS, small trucks and what you're using, so maybe one large truck, maybe a week, whatever. How big would that large truck be since that neighborhood is somewhat restrictive for trucking, for trucking in and out of there?
Yes, that's a good question. I would venture to say, you know, 53-foot semi once in a while. But they would probably look at it logistically. And if they can't get the big truck in there, they might put on a box truck, I would imagine. It's something we could, you know, be cognizant of and ask for box trucks.
Right, okay. Commissioners, does anyone else have any questions of what you made us aware of, of the scope and intent of that location? Use, anything there?
What exactly is a hub zone? How big is it? Is this a designated area?
So I will let one of you guys maybe speak to that. I'm not super familiar with them.
This is a hub zone.
Again, it's a designation from the U.S. government, from the Small Business Administration. So I'll let one of you speak to that who's a lot more familiar with how those work.
A hub zone is a historically underutilized business zone. And during the census, they look at how much we make in the area. They look at that. They look at the national average. I believe it's 10% below the national average or unemployment that exceeds the national average is designated a hub zone. Other things that create hub zones are base closures, Native American land, disaster. If there's a disaster, New Orleans was a hub zone for a temporary amount of time. And the SBA goes through a process. You have to be American. You have to be 51% business owner as an American. You have to hire a third of your people from inside the hub zone and maintain a third because the whole idea is you're going to get cost preference on the contract of 10% and fair and open competition. And they want that money to then be distributed throughout that community, to bring that community up, is the main point of it.
So like, is all of Leavenworth in the hub zone or is it just the north part?
Do we have the internet?
Yeah.
Can we do a SBA hub zone map?
Where you typically see it is along highway or a.
Hub zone.
Two, Second Street, that area. And then this northern section is the first.
Well, Julie's looking at that. One question, sir, would have for you, and that is, first of all, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Again, as a Vietnam vet, I appreciate that. Two, is that, do you have other operations, your history of past manufacturing that you have done similar to this? Or what, is this a first for you?
Yes, this is a first for light manufacturing. Right now, I'm a distributor mainly. My, I distribute for CAE, Millipore EMD, Beckman Colter, Danaher, very large companies. My customers include the EPA, FBI, Navy, Army, Air Force, VA, of course, NIH, everybody.
So it looks like it's by census tract. We've got those two north Leavenworth census tracts that are included.
So that goes all the way up to metropolitan.
So you gotta hire 30% from within. They have to live in this subzone?
In that one or ones around it. So if you Google out your county just north, it's all a hub zone. But I mean, that's a long drive. And then south there is a hub zone, so we could take from there. And a third of them have to be out of that area. And you have to do your best due diligence, your best effort, sorry, to keep a third of your employees from that area. And let's be honest, at $20 an hour, they're going to be moving out of the area pretty quick, right? So.
There's another commissioner. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Just a quick question. Have you operated a facility similar to the one you're going to operate here somewhere else?
No, I have not.
What makes this one unique for you?
My partner has operated facilities like this, you know. I think my biggest quality is knowing what I don't know, right? And I hire people around me that know more than me. My other two partners used to run a small pharmaceutical company called Teva. It's not very small. And they brought many drugs to market. And that's our goal, is actually to make medications. Having said that, I think I just might not be smart enough to know that I spit off more than I can chew. But it's worked for me to this point.
Well, as it works for you.
It works.
So I don't know if this is a good question for you or them. It relates to an earlier question. If, once your facility's up and running, if I'm driving by at 10 o'clock in the morning, besides a truck pulling up to drop things off and seeing your sign up front, what will I hear or see?
Park cars.
Park cars. Do you think there's adequate parking there for 60-plus employees?
I think by the time we're at 60, we'll probably have a second location, so I do believe so, yes.
Let me ask you this question.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Let me ask you this question. So if you outgrow your facility, what happens to that facility?
So this facility will always be maintained because we're going to put some $6 million of repackaging there. When we outgrow this facility, we'll actually manufacture and press the pills at a different facility, then bring them in in 55-gallon drums to be brought to this facility to be brought down into 30, 60, 90-day supplies and bottles. So it's kind of like a staggered thing. We're planning on the crawl-rock-run kind of military-type thing. This is the walk phase or crawl phase. Then we'll have the walk with repackaging and then run as manufacturing. When we hit run, we'll need a separate facility per FDA rules because you don't want the particulate and the powder and the air contaminating medical devices and so on.
So you always have that facility? That's your plan? My question is, I know we're looking at industrial and that's why I asked that question. But what happens if you, instead of, just out of curiosity, instead of going industrial, you go for a special use permit for them?
That's, yeah, that's, no, that's different. This type of use isn't something that's allowed by special use permit in Neighborhood Business District.
Okay. They would change it where you got light industrial. What we're talking about is restricted to light industrial. It'd be out of the scope of that, a change. If you don't mind, I do have a question to trigger, but it might come to your number two man on that one, is that when this assembly goes on and you bring in those components and go, gun into assembly, what you're doing, there'd be nothing there in conflict with EPA, hazmat, or anything in dangerous components or anything outside of scope, what I call, manufacturing that would be impossible harm to anyone in that area?
Absolutely not. I mean, these are medical devices.
I just wanted to ask that question.
So regulated.
How, that's all in there? How you regulated?
I mean, we're regulated with a chain of custody. When stuff comes in, we have to verify that that manufacturer used, you know, the right metal, right? The this. There's even regulations on large companies making your packaging. It has to be recyclable and so on for them to maintain their green status. Contracts I take have green clauses in them. It's just.
And you have, what, like annual audits for your?
You have to do a self-audit. You have to provide that audit at any time when they ask for it. When you get up to 25 billion and above, you have to have a green energy plan to show that you're working on offsetting carbon footprint. You have to track your carbon footprint and so on.
If you don't mind, so due to some of my contracted background, is the status you're getting with that hub zone and veteran-owned, small, veteran-owned status you are, there'd be extensive documentation that you would maintain to keep that status?
So I'm currently hub zone certified in Bremerton Naval Shipyard. Yes, I have to go to the SBA every five years. And then SDV SB was abused pretty bad. So that is intrusive and incredible, interviews, bank statements, personal tax returns, everything, background checks. And we're about to go through it again. I've had four exams and I've never had a phone.
Have we monitored Small Business Administration and meet a lot of requirements to maintain that? So we've got that. So I think that. Does any other commissioner have any questions for him of what we've obtained on the use, intent, logistics, manufacturing? Anything outside the scope of that that we're concerned about? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. My name's Keith Baird. I am the senior vice president for Stripes Global. Thank you all for having us. To answer the questions about manufacturing, I have been in industry for 40 years, all that time in manufacturing. Spent half of that time as an engineer and the rest of that time has been in sales, business development, as well as managing those operations, which I was currently doing prior to joining my friend here with Stripes Global. As far as the regulatory side of things, we will be, we're going to be after the International Standards Organization or ISO certifications. So we'll maintain that. We'll maintain probably two. ISO 13485, which is related to medical equipment, and then 9001, which is general quality systems. In addition, we will be seeking FDA certification on that as well. So to answer your question about audits, we'll be, those are annual audits, okay? So you'll have annual audits from the ISO. You'll have to pick a registrar and you'll use them to certify your operation system. The FDA, same way, they will have annual audits that we'll have to maintain. So yeah, this is a very detailed operation in terms of the systems and the information that we will be required to maintain. But we'll have to be able to identify where every lot number is. We have to maintain details about all the components that went into that. We have to understand everything about that. As Tyson was saying, it's that chain of command. When we take control of that, we own that all the way through the rest of that process. We have to be able to account for that.
If you don't mind, and I appreciate that, the ISO 9000, the industrial standard organizations, those standards, is that being in compliance with those standards, and that really tells me the high standards of quality that you have to maintain and internal quality control that you must have.
Yes, sir.
Our, an external source comes in to inspect that occasionally to make sure you're meeting those standards. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I said it that way. That says a lot to be, in terms of quality of high assembly and quality of the product, which makes sense since it's medical, dental field anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. That's why, Commissioners?
Does that mean you're hiring technical people or highly skilled people for these positions?
Some will be. Some will be. There will be some. I mean, all of the positions will require, you know, a certain skill set, right? And as part of that, we will train them to our procedures so they're able to maintain that quality system. Obviously, they'll have the necessary equipment that they need to do that. that they need to do that. So yeah, there will be some, some technical, we'll have some, there'll be some support, technical support, is where I see that role. Most of the employees that Tyson was talking about would be what I would refer to as direct labor-type employees.
Assemblers?
Primarily, assemblers, warehouse, yeah. For example, the packaging piece of equipment he was talking about requires a support staff of five. So everyone, and that's just to keep it replenished, keep it moving, keep parts moved away, keep, so that going on. And then the other question that I heard earlier was, if you drive by at ten in the morning, what are you gonna see? It's, and as Tyson, I think, indicated, there's not gonna be any emissions. Everything would be green. We're not, there's no chemicals involved in these. Because of the way we're regulated, everything we do is analyzed, everything. So even solids that we use, we have to be very careful about those and how they're labeled, how they're tagged, so that when anyone walks in, it's very, it's, if that container contained, let's say isopropyl alcohol, which we all have in our homes probably, that would have to be labeled as such. You would have to have the hazmat label on that indicating what it was. And that's, that's the world that we're gonna be existing in.
That did trigger me in terms of any required protective, personal protective equipment, or any modification you'd have to make to that for air movement or anything that you would have. Is there changes you have to do with the building to meet with your, what your output is gonna be?
Any changes that we anticipate to the building would be internal. So we would have a room, maybe a special room within the building itself. In terms of adding or expanding, no. No, everything would be self-contained. And the key there is really gonna be the number of air changes that we have in that room, the HEPA type filtration. That'll be the key. And then just how, make sure we have good gowning processes, if that's a requirement. Most of the PPE is gonna be anti-static stuff, you know, hair bonnets for some of us, right? So, you know, so things like that. Gloves, simple stuff, yeah.
Commissioners?
One other quick question, sir.
Absolutely.
What would your typical operating hours be?
Typical operating hours, be normal daytime business hours initially, so it'll be a seven to three, eight to four, something like that. Yeah, Monday through Friday, yeah.
But weekends is needed for overtime and meet demand.
Exactly.
Thank you. I mean, it could exceed that, sir.
We could easily exceed that.
As demand changed, he might have to go to sixteen-hour, two shifts or something. We couldn't put a restriction on him. He has to maintain those hours.
But the plan is, the plan is to have a Monday through Friday.
Got it.
So I said typical.
Yeah, got it.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other people, for or against? Please.
I'm just gonna wrap this up, I think, on behalf of the four here. I think, you know, we've had a great discussion about the zoning issues. When you talk about use and what happens if and when, and things of like trash and lighting and traffic and trucks, those are the things that zoning really is concerned about. And I think the one thing I wanted to stress is, when you look at this type of use and how it blends into the neighborhood today and then into the future, I think it's critical that we, as a city, look at adapting some of these neighborhoods for these small, unintrusive uses that will provide benefit to our community. You know, when you look at June, she has been so darn successful, but on the weekends, you know, she is dropping five hundred, three hundred, or four hundred people in for a Sunday brunch. When you think of the Nine hundred. I apologize. When you think of the traffic, the trucks, the food delivery service, the trash, all of those things that have to support the business that's there currently
Right.
versus what will take place in it for a use like this, you could almost make the case that this use is less intrusive to the neighborhood during hours when people are at home, right? And I think that is indicative of maybe the, why we don't see a neighborhood here tonight saying no.
And I think that's why the churches like it, because it's
Exactly.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll wrap up by saying thank you for your time. I think this is a benefit to the community, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else would like to come up to podium, for or against? June, I see you here. Are you happy?
I'm happy. I'll be happy.
I wanted to make sure you're happy, because I come here for food. I was there yesterday with you. I want to make sure you're happy.
I'm in Euston in London, that's it.
Anyone? One? Anyone? Two? Okay, I'm closing the part of the open forum. This is now closed. So open, that means we, the commissioners, will discuss this entirely amongst ourselves. We know the location. We know June's done fantastic there with the quality of service she's provided to the community. With her food there, it's been incredible. I think it's been a win-win from a grocery store operation to the conversion of what that is. And as Mr. Rowley alluded to, the building needs to be used. There's nothing worse than a vacant building that's not used, what I call in harmony with the neighborhood, that achieves some objectives and causes a win-win. To have a veteran-owned business with light industrial use without significant noise that would be in conflict with the neighborhood, I think is a fantastic issue. I think to, to the manufacturing that we've been told is light industrial without any significant, you know, noise, EPA, decibel things, and things that would concern neighborhoods and say, it affects my property value, everything affects something, and I got that. But it's what is the greater good of the use of that building? And to go to know that it's veteran-owned and manufacturing good. We did discuss it. It's too late. I'm not gonna bring it back, but you know, a lot of, I like to think it's a veteran-owned place, and I think that he's gonna have people coming that wanna work for him, in my opinion, at twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour. We know that. Monday through Friday is a great win-win. I feel certain that he has, without looking at it again and bringing it back up, that there's veterans there that would, that he would take a hard look at, trying to hire veterans to be involved with his manufacturing on that. Not that he has to, but a certain requirement for veterans hiring to be in that category. So I'll open up to the other commissioners, but I just see a win-win situation there that is in harmony, as Mr. Rowley alluded to on that, versus other things that could go in that building. The issue was discussed. We know the need for, we know the need for a grocery store in the Northland. We know that. But again, as it's been looked at, parking, size, you know, whatever. Someone has not come forward and said, I want to make it into a grocery store and convert it. Because June's done fantastic, but what's in there now? What's in there now is very nice on that one. So if you haven't been in there recently, it's fantastic in there. So I do see a, I do seem to make a conversion to manufacturing versus a grocery store and that, because we know what that would look like, a grocery store versus what it is now. So let me hear other input from commissioners on any concerns you have for this location.
I have no concerns. I think it's a win-win, as you stated.
Same thing.
Happy?
Except that we're losing June's Northland.
I'm over you.
She's, she's, she's located her business cards to be available after the meeting, probably where she's going, her catering, whatever thing she's doing. She's not going far. Incredible. We know that.
I hope so, because we started out with her when she was down there on Broadway, way back.
Yes.
And thank you for how you used that building. I'm just saying that we know what it's, how it's been used in the quarter, that building, how much improvement made in that building, how nice it is with safety, sanitation, parking, and all that I can think of with locations. So again, I think this is a good conversion that is in our best interest. So if that's the case, commissioners, we have three options after hearing the, my SWOT analysis of this total situation. We're looking at, at this part of my location is we can recommend approval to the commissioners. We can recommend disapproval, all right? Or we can table it for further information if we so need. In my opinion, since Mr. Rowley is here, Pete's here, and what we've been, the information we've been provided, I don't know, in my opinion, only, is that a tabling of this to request additional information. I don't, I cannot think of any additional information I would need to make this here and this beyond, but we've been told tonight, that's in the best interest of this location. So that, commissioners, I will take a recommendation to any one of the three options you want.
I would recommend that we go ahead with the zoning of the I-1, the way it was described to us and how it was gonna be regulated. I think that's fine.
Okay. The recommendation we made then, this conversion from the NBD, Neighborhood Business District, to L1 Light Industrial District. I need a second.
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is approved. I appreciate coming. I appreciate the disabled veteran status. I appreciate your service, sir. I appreciate the engineering background, your intent for this location, and thank you, thank you. And June, thank you, thank you. June, pay attention, I'm still talking. I'm one kid. I wanna give you kudos, June. Thank you, thank you for this. I know it's, you know, this came up sudden and this whole thing on conversion, and a lot of us in the community will be saddened that this location is closing, because you've had such a great following of loyal people. And thank you for your fantastic dedication you've made to June's Cottage and the commitment you've made in the food service industry, which I know is eighty hours a week commitments you've made to June's Cottage. So we're sorry that you don't go, but at least you can say it's going, you're leaving June's Cottage, losing that, but look what it's going to.
I know.
I feel really good about that. I hope you feel happy about where it's going to, okay? But that, this concludes our meeting. Thank you for coming.
No, we have another item.
Go Jayhawks. What?
We have another item.
There's one item.
Includes us.
Do we? Oh, Mike was leaving, so I thought we were doing something. Mike, leave another.
Mike?
Oh, I thought we had the one item. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you.
And this will go to the City Commission on April twenty-sixth for first consideration ordinance for a City Commission to approve.
Okay, let me regroup. Thank you, guys.
Let me ask Mike a question. Mike Riley?
Well, wait a minute.
Mike?
Mr. Riley, we have one more question for everybody.
Oh, thanks. Thanks for coming. It was nice to meet you.
It's on the, on the website.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Bye, Mike.
Okay, all righty. I was in Vietnam a few years ahead of you. As a captain, we're good. All right, we're good. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, right.
Yeah, there was another grocery store.
There was.
Well, my bad. I'm going to, I thought there was only one agenda item on there, because initially we had only one item. Number two agenda item for the commissioners is two oh two two. Oh, six, forty-eight, twenty, South Fourth Street, South Fourth. Consider a final plat for U-Haul on Fourth Street, okay?
We'll give that a second update.
Thank you. So this is the final plat we've looked at before on this location?
No, we haven't seen this, since it's just a one-lot plat, it doesn't require preliminary, so it's just a final plat, so this is the only time you guys have to see it. So again, this is a final plat request for the U-Haul property here. It's the former Kmart building. Right now, it's two separate lots. There's kind of the north one up there that's just the wooded area, and then the lot where the actual building and parking lot is. Neither of these lots is platted yet. They're just parcels that the county has record of. And the U-Haul property owner is requesting the plat in order to combine those into one lot. They're planning to build another storage building on the property, and just need those two parcels combined in order to do that. Typically, if we have two lots that just needs to be combined into one, if they're two platted lots, we can do that administratively. But since these are not platted lots, they need to be platted first. So that's why the plat is coming before you. And it looks like we don't have anybody here. I know that the engineer that worked on this is out, is from out of town. And so when we met with them as staff, we had to do it virtually, so. But again, it's just a simple plat, combining the two lots into one. And just to kind of note that the Starbucks, the Starbucks that's right there where the old Shoe Store was is not part of this, that's its own separate lot. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. Our Public Works Department is working through a few issues related to utility easements and that type of thing with the engineer, and those will all be resolved before this goes to the City Commission, ask the City Commission to accept the dedication of any easements, and that will all be resolved prior to that time.
Like common driveways and
Um, those, like utility easements. If they're gonna have to install utilities, there has to be dedicated easements for that. So it wouldn't be any right-of-way or anything like that. It'd be utility easements.
Okay, so the driveways and the access roads to Starbucks and
Yep, all that's, all that's staying. Yep, nothing's actually changing with the layout of the property.
So they already owned a lot, the space we're talking about, they already have the U-Haul operation in place, and all we're doing is expanding that to utilize the lot that was not platted for use.
Yep, so they're just, they're combining into one lot. It's a little hard to read that plat up there. It's just gonna be one lot, and they just really need to have it as one lot, so they can add that additional building that they're planning to build.
So are, we should have to go through the process of recommend, disapprove, or more time into recommending to the council?
Yep, so you actually would approve or deny the plaits? And then what the City Commission does is separate from the plat. They're just, they would just accept the dedication of easements. So you actually would do a motion to approve or deny the plat?
There's no discussion. I'll accept the motion for a commissioner on approval denial for this consolidation combining the plot, the lots.
Recommend approval, or move to approve it.
Thank you.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, again, this is considering the final plat, the U-Haul, forty-eight, twenty, South Fourth Street, for the combined into one lot. On favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I'm not opposed. I'm for it.
Okay.
You got too quick.
Okay. Now, I think
Are you an aye?
Aye. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, I think now I have the Plan One and Two. That concludes the planning commission meeting for April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
So I will let